Good evening. Welcome to the October 12th, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Brian Wood from Woodside Bible Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. So if you would please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards. Good evening.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for who you are. We thank you that you care about the details of our lives. That's why you not only ordain our days, but you even number the hairs on our heads. That being said, Lord, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, your direction this evening over these proceedings, and we pray that everything that is done and said would be in reflection of who you are. We pray all of this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The real call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present? Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four this evening, and it's my privilege and honor to present a proclamation for Eli's of Troy, 45 years in business. And if I could meet Randy Norman at the podium, I'd like to present a proclamation. Randy, as the mayor of Troy, it's an honor and a privilege for me to be here this evening to present a proclamation to celebrate Eli of Troy Men's Wear, 45 years in business. And I'd like to read this into the record because I think it's a reflection of somebody that's invested in our city. Even during the tough times, Randy was always there for us. And the entire time I was on the police department, I always got my suits and ties from Randy. He's just an asset to our community, and it's such an honor for me to read this, Randy.
Thank you.
So whereas, 45 years ago, Eli Kurtz moved his men's clothing store from Royal Oak to the city of Troy at 5607 Rochester Road. And whereas, Randy Norman came to work with Eli in 1978. Eli taught Randy all about being a customer-oriented store. I can attest to that. Offering quality one-on-one service to men in Troy and the surrounding areas. They built a very loyal customer base with third and fourth generation customers who wanted to look good and purchase quality tailored suits. Their philosophy is what's kept Eli's of Troy in business since 1970. And whereas Randy bought the store in 1995 when Eli retired, and has continued offering tailored suits along with shirts, ties, shoes, socks, casual sports coats, Randy works with two tailors and his son Kyle helps on Saturdays. And whereas Eli's of Troy has been a huge community supporter for many years, including the Troy baseball boosters and Troy High and Athens High School all-night parties, as well as Troy School District sports teams. And although it doesn't say it in the proclamation, he's supported our police department and our fire department as long as Randy's been around, and we thank you for that. Whereas Eli's of Troy sells high school varsity jackets, tuxedos for proms and weddings, as well as doing the measurements for the Troy's Fire Department Class A uniforms. Myself, councilmembers Ed Pennington and Dave Henderson, City Manager Brian Kishnik, as well as many Troy police officers and firefighters have been loyal customers over the years. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy hereby congratulate Randy Norman and Eli's of Troy Men's Wear on their 45th anniversary in the city of Troy. And be it further resolved that the mayor, city council, city management join the citizens of this community in celebration of the 45th anniversary of Eli of Troy Men's Wear and look forward to being part of Troy for many years to come. It's presented this 12th day of October, 2015. It's signed by myself, the mayor, all members of city council. Randy, congratulations and thank you so much for what you've done for our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The only thing I'd like to say is because of that loyal customer base, that's what keeps us around, and I appreciate every one of these people just as I do everyone that supports us, and thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You were easy.
C2 is the Troy Community Coalition Program's update. We have an introduction by Chief Mayor, Chief of Police, and with the chief is Nancy Morrison, the Troy Community Coalition Director. Good evening, Nancy, and chief.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Nancy to give a brief presentation tonight on the Troy Community Coalition. I've known Nancy Morrison for more than 16 years. There's not anyone else that's in a position that she is right now that is as dedicated to the cause of preventing drug and alcohol abuse in the city of Troy. She does a very good job at that. She's here to give you a presentation about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor Slater, councilmembers, and city of Troy employees. It is a pleasure to be here this evening to provide you with information about the Troy Community Coalition. You probably are familiar with our mission statement. We are all about promoting that healthy lifestyle free from the abuse of drugs and alcohol and tobacco. We have an annual budget of $140,000, and we receive $25,000 from the city of Troy, and we greatly appreciate those funds because that helps us with our prevention efforts. We also receive funds through grants, donations, and fundraising. And that takes us right into our biggest fundraiser of the year, which is our celebrity night dinner, and that will be coming up next Thursday, October 22nd, at the San Marino Club in Troy. It is open to the public, and tickets are $125 apiece. This year, our celebrity guest is Dr. Murray Howe. He is the son of the legendary Gordy Howe. He's a wonderful storyteller, and it'll be a very enjoyable evening. We will have our silent auction, hors d'oeuvres, dinner, and then, of course, Dr. Murray Howe. So if you have not purchased your tickets at this time, there is still time to call the Coalition office, and we will be happy to set you up. The last time I was here, I talked about all of our programs, and I just wanted to focus on the success of our 20th Annual Summer Camp. We do get referrals for these children to attend our camp from their teachers, their counselors, their principals, their parents. So we had 71 children attend our camp. So we fill a bus, and we pick up these children in certain pockets of Troy. We take them on a weekly field trip. They normally would probably be spending their summer vacation at home, sometimes alone because their parents have to work. We also incorporate a lot of prevention programming during our four-week summer camp. And of course, we incorporate team-building activities as well. We partner with the Troy Police Department to present the Choose Wisely Prevention Program to 4th grade students during the school year, but we ask the presenters to come and present them to our campers as well. This is our second year of bringing in a yoga instructor so that they can teach the children how to quiet their mind, how to reduce stress, and ground themselves and be centered. We also brought in an individual from a credit union to provide financial literacy. And then arts and crafts are also a big part of any summer camp. The police department brought in their K-9 unit to provide the students with a demonstration in how they utilize the K-9 unit in helping their job, in their job. We also brought in the hip-hop dancers. They volunteered their time from Oakland University to teach these students a hip-hop dance. We brought in the chef from Gleaner's Food Bank to teach these children how to make a nutritional snack, because a lot of these children are home alone a lot, and this was a snack that they did not have to utilize the oven for. We brought in a nurse from Carmona's Cancer Institute, and she taught the children about the hazards of tobacco. So again, always implementing prevention into our summer camp. The last day of our camp, we hold a multicultural potluck luncheon, and we ask all campers to bring in a family favorite dish, and it's basically a heritage dish so that students present on their heritage that day. And the young man on my left was so proud of himself because that was a family favorite dish, and he created that. He brought all the ingredients and created it that morning to serve to the other campers. And a big thank you from our campers. Again, I don't know if you can make out the sign that they're holding with their paper plates, but that says thank you. And without the support of the city, we would not be able to do all of the prevention efforts that we are engaged in. So are there any questions?
Any questions from council for Nancy?
Randy, thank you so much for your time and your support.
Thank you, Nancy, and thank you so much for what you do for our community. Without you, we probably wouldn't be the safest city. I really believe that. So thank you for what you do for our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Which leads me right into C3, which is crime stats with a presentation by Chief Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent segue. With me tonight will be Ben Nelms. He's our crime data analyst, if there's any questions specifically on the data. What we wanted to do was discuss violent crime statistics. And the reason this came about was there was an article in the Detroit News on October 2nd that went through and listed the cities of over 50,000 population to show what the crime stats were for them. Now, this is violent crime rate. So when you look at the city of Troy, we're very fortunate to be at the very bottom of the violent crime rate. That means we have the lowest crime rate of any city in Michigan with a population of over 50,000. Now, Ben cleaned this up to make it a little more legible here. As you can see right there at the very bottom, we have a violent crime rate of 30 violent crimes per 50,000 residents. And we had unfortunately one murder last year. When you look at the crime stats, that's pretty good overall. One's too many, but we do what we can with them. Now, once again, this is violent crime, so we're looking at homicide, rape, which in Michigan's considered to be criminal sexual conduct, robbery, and aggravated assaults. So you see, there's our 10-year trend in both chart and graph form. Our highest was 93, 94 in 2006 and 2008, and we're down to 50 this year. Now, we look at what brings all this together to make Troy the safest city. It's groups like the Troy Youth Assistance, Troy School District, the Troy Community Coalition. You just heard a presentation from them. Yourself, the city government, everybody within the city that worked so hard to make this a great place to live and work. The police department is obviously part of it, and what we're doing is we leverage our people and utilize technology, so we're putting our resources in the best spot that we possibly can. So the CQ Press has consistently found and said that the city of Troy is the safest city in Michigan with a population more than 50,000. So you see, for the past 10 years, eight of the last 10 years, we've been the number one safest city, and the other two years, we were number three. We're very proud of that statistic. I think it's worth pointing out, we don't make up these numbers. These are numbers that go to the FBI, then the FBI turns around and they put out all the FBI crime data, so this is across the whole nation, and that's where these numbers come from. So like the Detroit News, we didn't go to them and say do an article on us. The Detroit News did the article, and we see the data there. So we got asked to put a presentation out. For the nation, we're consistently in the top 38. In 2005, 2006, we were number five and number six safest cities in the state. The current year, 2014's last, we're 23rd in the nation. So we look at some of the reasons that this happens. We pride ourselves in high visibility. There are studies that show that high visibility, your police department being out there making traffic stops, having marked police vehicles helps drive down your crime rate. So as you can see here, we went back to 2010 and showed how we're trending upwards in our traffic stops. Traffic stops and high-visibility enforcement does help reduce crime. That's only one of the reasons. We have many investigative resources. Time will preclude me from going through each one of these, but I think you can get the point. We're involved with many multi-jurisdictional task force, and we make sure that we're utilizing our people in the best way we can by partnering with other local agencies, state agencies, and federal agencies to get the most we can. Now, notable on this is the efforts we've made with identity fraud and the Financial Crimes Task Force, because while we've seen a very appreciable decrease in violent crimes, on the other end, we've had an increase in financial crimes and fraud-type crimes. So things are changing. The type of crime that's out there changes. So as things change, we have to change how we do business. Just to illustrate two of the points, I think everyone saw earlier this year when we put out the press release and made a Craigslist Safe Zone in front of the police station. If people wanted to do transactions, they could do them in the lobby, or they could do them out in front of the police station where we have video cameras and that, and not go and meet people in parking lots and other dangerous areas like that. That's something you do ahead of time to help prevent crime from occurring. That helps keep us in a very safe city in what we are. One of our next assistance developed a sign. We put the sign out front so people know exactly where the coverage is. Another thing I wanted to point out that's new is we had a business in town donate four credit card readers to us. So we're able to put these credit card readers out on the road with police officers. As you can see there in the illustration, they plug into the bottom of a smartphone, and what it allows us to do is to read the magnetic strips on a credit card, and we can tell if somebody's fraudulently in possession of a credit card that way, or if they've made up their own cards and put their own names on it, and then really the magnetic strip will show that it's someone else. That's one of the new crimes that's going on, the financial crimes that we have to attack. We've had very good luck doing that. So as crime changes, the city changes, the city of Troy Police Department has to change, and that's what we're doing. So we pride ourselves on doing that. This is going to be a brief presentation that concludes what we had on violent crime. Ben is here if we have any questions about the data or things like that. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from council? Councilwoman Hoderick.
Where do you get the crime data? And then what do you do with it here with this department?
Basically, after the reports come in, they're classified, they go through, they have to be either normally classified or reclassified through our records department or our staff, and they're shipped kind of basically to the FBI who compile our stats. And the system that we use in Clemis actually is the same report that is sent to the FBI. So I'm pulling the same data that's sent to them when I do like an in-house request. Or I pull stats for presentation like this.
And then the data, I mean, we have the data here that we're seeing in a report. Are you then, does that define how you use resources then in the police department and where you're targeting?
Yes, ma'am. One of the biggest things we do is time of day, day of week, so we can allocate our resources correctly. So if we have a spike in crime at midnight, we don't want to put most of our officers on the road at 8:00 PM. We want to make sure that we're doing the coverage where the calls for service occur or when they occur.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for council? Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's important to point out that our statistics are from the FBI and are not made up like other cities do to try and make themselves look better. Ours are official FBI statistics.
Yes, sir. Well-stated.
Next is C4. It's a proclamation for the Tree City USA/Arbor Day. I'd like to make that presentation to Mike Potyuk, the city forester. If I could meet Mike at the podium, please. Well, Mike, it's really a pleasure for me to make this presentation to you. I know when you did the open house at the DPW, I spoke to you about why my tree was not doing so well, and you told me to quit using my weed whacker around my tree, and I think that's great advice to everybody, to stop weed-whacking around your tree because that's the worst thing you can do to a tree almost. So I appreciate your input, but really, it's a privilege for me to present this to you on behalf of the city. And if I could, I'd like to read this because Troy is such a great tree city. Whereas the city of Troy has been certified as a Tree City USA for 25 years through the National Arbor Day Foundation, and this prestigious certification proves the city of Troy is dedicated to the future of its urban forest. And whereas the city of Troy wishes to acknowledge that Troy's urban forest reduces noise, air pollution, energy costs, reflected light, flooding, stabilizes soils, sequesters carbon, provides habitat for wildlife, and improves the overall quality of life. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas it is in the interest of all to plant and protect trees. And whereas Troy deserves to be recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and wishes to continue its tree planting ways. And I know we've made sure in our budget that we're going to continue to do that. So therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby proclaims May 6th, 2016, May 5th, 2017, and May 4th, 2018, as Arbor Day in the city of Troy, and urges all citizens to support our city's urban forestry program and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. This is signed this 12th day of October, 2015, by myself and all members of city council, and thank you for what you do to make sure that we're the Tree City of USA again. Thank you, Mike. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this very important recognition as Tree City USA is well-earned and comes from your commitment and vision to tree-lined streets in the city of Troy. Well done. Congratulations.
There are no carryover items this evening, no public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, so we will move to regular business as there are no postponed items this evening. I1 is board and committee appointments. There are none this evening. I2 are board and committee nominations. There are none this evening. There is no closed session request, so we will move to I4, which is the 2016 city council meeting schedule. Was Cindy Stewart going to do a presentation?
Cindy Stewart was not going to do a presentation. She provided the information with a lot of input from everyone.
Thank you. There is a yellow sheet that's on the table that is a supplement to the resolution, and if everyone is okay with that, I know Councilman Teetz wanted to add many more meetings, but we're not going to let him do that. Would somebody like to move that resolution? Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move I4, the 2016 city council meeting schedule as printed.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick that we approve I4, the 2016 city council meeting schedule as printed on the yellow sheet at the table this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented and printed in the packet this evening. The vote, Ms. Dixon? all items on the consent agenda as presented and printed in the packet this evening. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. If you are here this evening on a consent agenda item, they've all been approved this evening. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. K-1A is an announcement of a public hearing for October 26, 2015. It is a street vacation request for the alley between Vermont and Birchwood, abutting parcels, too many to read. So if you are interested in that public hearing, it will be on October 26, 2015. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening. So we will move to public, or council comments. Any comments from council? Councilman Pennington?
Something I need to talk about, we have a coyote problem in Troy that nobody talks about and until recently, I knew nothing about. A good friend of mine had her medium-sized dog carried away, it was a schnauzer, and it's a standard schnauzer, it wasn't one of those small ones, carried away by two coyotes last month. The couple lives in the Long Lake and Liverno area. The dog received life-threatening puncture wounds, cuts, a broken jaw in two areas, the jaw was basically just hanging down, and five teeth knocked out. If not for quick thinking by Dave, which is the husband of a friend of mine, and to chase down the street where the coyote finally dropped the dog, the dog would have been killed. The couple had to go to four different animal hospitals before they found one who thought they could save the dog. The dog survived and is still recovering, but there are two takeaways here. One is do not feed the coyotes. They're wild animals who lose their fear of humans when they're fed intentionally or unintentionally. If you know coyotes frequent your neighborhood, stay vigilant with your pets and small children. The second point is if you feel threatened or stalked by coyotes, I had on here to call the DNR, but I talked to Chief Mayor and what you want to do is just call Troy Police and make a police report, an incident report. This friend of mine called the DNR and they were, this is put in nicely, they were rude and dismissive. And she thought that they would not do anything until that, you know, a tragedy occurs. I read more online about this and coyotes, you wouldn't, you know, they're a small animal, but they did kill a three-year-old toddler in California many years ago. And then a 19-year-old woman was killed about 10 years ago in Canada. So they can be lethal. So if you know that there are coyotes in your area, you need to stay vigilant.
Thank you. Good advice. I've seen one in my backyard. Any other council comments? I have one council comment. We received good news at the Act 78 meeting this morning about a new fire chief. And I think I would like to turn the microphone over to City Manager Kishnik and perhaps he could let us know what the good news is.
I'm happy to report Mayor and Council that Mr. Dave Roberts is the number one candidate as approved by the Act 78 Commission this morning. So assuming he will come to terms with us, he is the new fire chief. And I have every reason to believe that we will come to terms and we are very happy and excited that after a long, very loyal career by Chief Nelson, it will be followed by Chief Roberts.
Thank you. It's a tough act to follow, but I think Dave will be up to it. He writes a great press release. There is no one that's signed up for comments on items or not on, or not on the agenda this evening from outside members of the public and outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned.